Call the meeting back to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good evening all. We will first move to approval of the minutes of the meetings held February 22nd and March 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. There were no persons signed up to address the board on either non-agenda or agenda items, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Now to the good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. As some of you know, the Sioux Falls School District will be celebrating 150 years of providing quality education to students this summer. A planning committee has already had two meetings to discuss the possibilities, and we'll be bringing more information to you in the next month or two about what those activities of celebration look like. But we have another celebration to talk about also. Celebrating a milestone anniversary this year is AAA's School Safety Patrol Program. For 100 years in schools across America, students have been trained to be crossing guards to provide a safer environment and leadership opportunity for millions of schoolchildren. More than 1,500 students in South Dakota, representing 63 school districts, help contribute to the program's success in their school and throughout their community. This actually started as a boys-only initiative when horse and buggies were still a transportation mode. Eventually, it did move on to involve girls and on this International Women's Day. I think that's most poignant to mention. In fact, talking about Sioux Falls School District history, this book was done in 1873 and took us through 1989. And on the page where Lowell Elementary has its history marked, it says Lowell is credited with having one of the state's first boys' patrol programs organized in 1932. A year later, a girl patrol was also started. So Lowell Elementary was a leader in that movement, and it's great to see that just shortly after the national movement of school safety patrols began, Sioux Falls adopted that as well. The training that the patrollers receive instills safety sense beyond crossing streets, including car and bus drop-off locations, monitoring some hallway congestion in some cases, and then teaching patrollers invaluable leadership that they can continue to develop when they move on into middle school. And each of our schools that has safety patrol students has a teacher advisor, an adult to help them with the training. Linda Pins Valdez from Oscar Howe Elementary was quoted in the press release that AAA put out, saying AAA's School Safety Patrol is an important part of our students' and families' lives. It allows fifth graders to take on responsibilities while keeping community members safe. This prepares and shapes our students for middle school, high school, and beyond. Those are some of the benefits of the Safety Patrol, that's safety awareness, as we mentioned, leadership, teamwork, respect for law enforcement, citizenship, and just pride in your community and in your work. For the last couple of years, we've teamed up with AAA at the start of school year for the Schools Open Drive Carefully campaign and had some media attention on that just to remind drivers that they're going to start seeing bikes and pedestrians out in full force, and that has been well-received in our community as well, and we've had some safety patrollers join us for that in the past. So a good celebration that they are marking 100 years as we are marking 150 this year. Also this evening on another topic, we will be celebrating 68 nominees for the 2021 Dr. John W. Harris Sioux Falls Teacher of the Year Award. Our eight finalists will join us for an in-person celebration at Axstill Park's auditorium at 7:00. And for those watching on TV, we hope you'll tune back in to be able to watch as we celebrate this excellence in teaching. Our finalists this year are Tyler Beisch from Edison, Jennifer Bog from Hawthorne, Amy Edwards from Hawthorne, Bobby Greenfield, Sonia Sotomayor, Lindsay Johnson from Oscar Howe Elementary, Jessica Peterson, John Harris, Anne Robertson from Whittier, and Rachel Turner from Roosevelt High School. So our nominees, their families, and the broader community can join us for that remote livestream event from the comfort of their own homes. Due to COVID, we can't gather everyone together, so we'll have our finalists in the room as well as our school board members and our judges and a couple of folks from the district. So we look forward to celebrating all of those eight finalists and the 60 other nominees for this year's award.
Thank you, Deanne. And I'd just like to reach out, a big thank you to Vern ID, our sponsor for Teacher of the Year. They've been sponsoring us for over $140,000, I believe. So thank you to them for continuing to support this great event to recognize our teachers. And it's neat because the teachers we have preschool, we have special ed, we have all three levels of school recognized in the finalists this year. So it's a really nice representation of our district.
There has been an incredible amount of work done by our educators this year. They should all deserve some sort of recognition, and they have been recognized. Vern ID has reached out and provided, in addition to their sponsorship of the Teacher of the Year Award, in January, they welcomed our staff back to the buildings by providing the fuel that everyone needs, snacks and some Diet Coke, some waters and things like that. So they certainly have gone above and beyond recognizing our educators and just what a difficult year it has been. So to have them stand beside us once again, the 33rd year of the Dr. John W. Harris Sioux Falls Teacher of the Year is just really, really emotional and just tells you what kind of great community partner they really are.
I'd like to make a little segue too. When you were talking about the Safety Patrol, I would like to recognize the district's great work, the path committee, Todd Tolkey's on that and Todd Veek and Dr. Stavon. You know, there were some concerns at Benrifle and what the solutions they came up with and working with that and doing that. So thank you very much for that extra work and that extra effort. I think it fits well with the Safety Patrol recognition as well going on.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I think it's important that we're having our Safety Patrols in fifth grade because they do go on to middle school where there are less maybe guidance as they walk to school. They're older, they're more mature, they have to have a little bit more responsibility. And so it's a great transition for those students to be able to help their peers and help themselves to get to school safely on maybe different paths or longer paths since our busing and our boundaries and things like that change. So I think it is important to recognize that because they do play an important role in not just getting the elementary kids across the street into school safely, but they continue that into their new homes at their middle schools as well.
Yes, and I believe I understood Mayor Paul Tenhaken is a former Safety Patroler, and he credits some of his leadership to those early lessons learned on the patrol. So big things ahead for those kiddos.
Thanks, Deanne.
Thank you. I'll move on to the conflicts of interest. I don't believe there were any new ones presented today. I'll move to the number 12, A through E, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. On to supplemental consent agenda. Items 13A, Claims to Sanford Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. 13B, Claims to Avera Heart Hospital. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention for Board Member Parker. Now to the reports of the superintendent. Spring activities return.
Yep, we're gonna ask Mr. Miley to come up. He has a couple of reports. First one is on the next season, which is very exciting, and I think we all felt like it was track meet season with the weather over the last few days. And then he'll also move on to a second report with the athletic assessment. And then Mr. Veek will be up with our legislative report.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Just want to start off by saying thank you for your continued support and belief in the athletics department, in our staff, our activities principals, our athletic directors, and our students in providing safe opportunities to compete and play during the 2020-2021 school year. So thank you for that. I'm here to recommend how we begin, well, end, our last two winter activities, which is girls' basketball and boys' basketball in state tournaments, and begin our spring sports, which will be track and field, girls' golf, and we have boys' tennis coming up this spring, as well as club baseball that we'll have offered here in the spring. We have met with our local medical providers, our state officials, and national organizations, and this is what we know, mini-ha-ha is still in community spread. We are recommending that we go into, or stay in Tier Three, which is two rostered, or two spectators per rostered athlete. And there's a couple of reasons for that in our guidance that we have from them is that we are in that community spread. The CDC is still recommending that you don't have medium-to-large size gatherings. Well, we are having those, but we want to conduct those in a safe manner, and we've done that throughout this school year in the Sioux Falls School District. And in talking to them, we just felt like there was too many unknowns. The vaccination, when our entire community is going to be vaccinated, is still unknown. It's great that the teachers are now starting. As of today, we got an email saying our teachers are going to be vaccinated, but there's just too many unknowns on when the entire community is going to be there. Their medical profession is saying maybe June, July, things of that nature. And there's just too many different types of strains and what that's gonna do. And the thing that we looked at is, it's kind of weird because everyone's saying you're gonna go outdoors and that it's probably not gonna spread as much. Well, that happened to us in the winter when everybody went indoors and was isolated. Our highest spread in transmission was in the fall when we were outdoors for all of our activities. So really, in looking at those, this is what we do know as leaders in our district, is that our guidance and protocols that we have put forward have worked. So our limited attendance, our masking, our locker room policies, our busing policies, all those type of things. So we want to ensure that we keep our kids and coaches and staff members safe while they participate this spring, and we want to ensure that they have the spring. So those are gonna, if you look at Howard Wood, for instance, for track and field or any track and field event that we have, we want to keep the coaches and team members and participants safe. So we're gonna use half of that facility to spread them and socially distance them on the other, on the one side of the facility, which is what we refer to as the visiting side, which is the arena side. So on the home side, we're gonna space out the spectators like we did this fall. If you were there, we go every other row, and if you do that, there's about 1,000 seats. Well, we have about 500, all the way up to 3,000 participants in the Dakota Relays, which is what we host the regional track meet. So to safely do that and not limit the participants in those events, we felt like it would be best if we kept with the limitations on the spectators and to provide a safe environment for our kids to compete. The other thing that people don't really kind of think about at first glance is you are outside, but when you come to those common areas, so you come to a restroom or the concession stand or the ticket booth, it gets really condensed really fast. So we wanted to make sure that we provided, keep providing those safe opportunities to do that. The one thing that we just wanted, we want to make sure that we communicate is that these activities that we're about to start on, these students at the high school level have already missed out on a quarter of their high school career. If this thing does ramp back up, and I hope it doesn't, but if it does and something happens where they have to miss events, that's half of their high school career that they've missed. and something happens where they have to miss events, that's half of their high school career that they've missed. We want to ensure that they don't have that. And at the middle school level, they already have missed out on half of their career, one year in track and field, and we want to ensure that they only miss out on half and not the full career. So that's why our recommendation is the way it is. I'm extremely proud of what our coaches, staff, and students have done in our activities. In the athletic world, we've only shut down one team all year for 14 days. That's it. They lost a couple of events, 14 days of practice, but that's a pretty remarkable effort by our staff, students, and leaders in our buildings to ensure that kids are participating in the activities that they love. So really proud to be able to say that and report that to you, and would recommend that the board move forward with our recommendation of keeping operating in Tier Three.
Thank you, Casey. You know, I was one that, when I first read the report, I'm like, well, it's spring and we're outside, why can't we? But you're exactly right. This is the season they missed out on last year, so we want to make sure these students have the ability to actually participate this spring session. And obviously, what we have been doing has been working, like you said, being the one team of all three buildings that has had to shut down because we've heard statewide how many other teams and schools have shut down, and we have not had to do that. So we'd like to get through to graduation and be able to do that. So thank you for your recommendation.
Yeah. Casey, thank you and thanks for all the work. It is amazing that we haven't had to shut down but one, and that just shows the attention and seriousness that you take for this, and I am certainly behind your recommendation. So thanks for all your work.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge the report on the spring activities return to play update?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved.
Excellent. The second report that I have is to inform the board of the Athletics Department to intend to comprehensively assess the athletic opportunities that are provided in the Sioux Falls School District during the 2021-2022 calendar year. There's a couple of reasons for this. For those that aren't aware, the South Dakota High School Activities Association has added and sanctioned girls' wrestling as a sport, and is also in discussion about softball as a sport to be sanctioned. That has not been approved yet as a sanctioned sport, but with that knowledge and having the addition of a brand-new high school and middle school, that landscape in the Sioux Falls area is changing for us. So we want to ensure that the opportunities that we are providing kids are hitting the most amount of kids that we possibly can. We want to make sure that we're offering the opportunities that are needed within the Sioux Falls School District because we all know the importance of the opportunities that we offer within our program. So we want to do a comprehensive assessment of participation, talking to students, staff, parents, all those type of things to make sure that we're using the resources appropriately and providing those opportunities. So I would just ask that the board acknowledges and gives us that opportunity to assess that. And there'll be a couple of modes of assessment, maybe through a survey, sitting down. We'll really use our Athletic Advisory Committee. There's also been discussion about adding a Student Athletic Advisory Committee. So what that timeline is, what that tool of assessment is, we'll go to work on that and put a good timeline and report to you next school year at some point about the assessment and our recommendations. So I ask that the board acknowledges our opportunity to do that assessment within the Athletic Department.
So you'll take next school year to do the assessment? So any changes that would be made would be made for the 2022-23 school year?
Yeah. We'll start as soon as our next Athletic Advisory Committee meeting is next week, so we'll start that. We've already started the discussion on the Student Athletic Advisory Group, so we're actually starting that conversation next week. And then what will that mode of assessment be? Will it be a survey, talk sessions, community sessions? How do we get staff, all those type of things, the rate of participation? Obviously, we have those participation numbers throughout the years in the Sioux Falls School District. So we will start that as early as next week and then report to you hopefully about this time next year on what our recommendation would be. But yeah, it would be to add, if we were to add or do anything of that nature, we would recommend it for the 2022-2023 school year.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve a comprehensive assessment for athletic opportunities moving towards the 2022-23 calendar Advisory Committee and the timeline recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved.
Thank you very much, Casey.
Good evening. I'm just gonna give you a brief update on the key bills we're watching. As of our last meeting, six had been, had final disposition, so I'll go over the others that are still, or were still going through the process. So to start, House Bill 1217, it's the fairness in women's sports. It defines biological sex for the purpose of school athletics and prohibits non-female participants in a female sport. That bill got out of the House, it went over to Senate State Affairs. It was killed, or it was defeated in Senate State Affairs 6 to 3, but it was smoked out onto the floor, and it passed today because I think it was 20 to 15. So that bill will go to the governor's office. We were opposed to that bill. We were mainly, well, we're concerned about lots of things, but also a big one was lawsuits from either side of the issue.
And there was no funding for protection of school districts for lawsuits, correct?
Correct. So, yeah, so we opposed that bill, but it passed, and it will go to the governor's desk. Senate Bill 49 is the governor's proposed 2.4 state aid increase bill. We support that. That's up in appropriation, joint appropriations tomorrow. And then another bill that's related to that, we haven't listed it as a key bill, but it's related, is that Senate Bill 64, which amends last year's appropriations bill, and that contains the one-time money for school districts that did not stay on their enrollment, their normal enrollment increase or slight decline or whatever, anybody that was off their normal path. It gives additional funding for them. I think that's worth about $2 million to us if it were to pass. So we're obviously watching that bill as well. So that's up as well.
What was that?
Senate Bill 64, it's up tomorrow as well. Yep, in joint appropriations. Senate Bill 177, that's the homeschool bill. It allows, among other things, homeschoolers to play, I mean, doesn't, it takes away the local control from school boards. It allows homeschoolers to play in sports and relaxes the already pretty low level of accountabilities even more. So that bill had passed. So that, like I said, we're only really tracking nine bills on the, as key bills, and there aren't a lot left. But the big ones then now for us will be the state aid, both last year's, our current year's money, that would be one time, and then next year's, of course. Standby for questions.
No questions, and we don't need to approve since we've already voted on all these, correct?
No, it's just acknowledge the report. Thank you.
Move on to policy. Are you, thank you, Carly.
So tonight, we have a few policies. So just as a friendly reminder, we review these on a cyclical pattern of just making sure that they're reviewed on a routine basis for any updates. So this month, we did have five that we looked at. The first one is GBD regarding staff development, and we did not make any changes to that. The next one was GCG and its accompanying regulations regarding substitute teachers. We just updated that to current practice. I think probably the most notable change was just that a few years ago, when substitute teaching was harder, or harder to find substitutes, we relaxed a little bit and let the combination of both work experience and education be part of the requirements versus just relying solely on that college education. I think a good example of that was this year when we welcomed current college students to come in and substitute teach, and I think that was very positive, both for the students and for our staff. So I think that's just something to point out, but so that's a minor tweak on that one, just as the language. The next one is INIJNDC, and it's accompanying regulation, acceptable and ethical use of technology. There were no changes made to that one. JSCE, student bullying, there were no changes made to that one. And JICFA and the accompanying regulation, hazing, there were also no changes made to that one. So due to there not being any major changes in content, and it was just mostly updating of language to make it appropriate to current practice, we would recommend the review revision of those five policies and regulations for tonight. You'd like to make a second?
No, I have a question for you. It was GCG?
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks.
I have a motion from Carly. And I'd like to add on the substitute teacher one. We also did that for student teachers as well to allow them to teach in the district while they were student teaching as well, which is a great resource for them and us as well.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those policies are one change and no change at all are adopted.
I'd like to add that tomorrow petitions can be picked up for the election for a school board, which will be May 18th. There are two open seats. So tomorrow, March 9th, you pick them up. They're due April 19th, or April 9th, so you get one month to fill those. And May 18th is the election. And Bev Chase, who's in the back, will be here at 7:30, I think, tomorrow morning, all ready to help you if you are interested in running. So thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the board?
Saying none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.